Individual with liberty and justice for all. All right. Also, I totally forgot last time, but I'm gonna read our mission statement again in partnership with communities. The mission of the Dilworth and Felton School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible, like all of our peers. All right, all board members are present, um, as well as Principals Lepard and O'Keefe and Superintendent Tegiston. Um, pardon me? Oh, Marianne, hi, Marianne.
Hello.
All right, do we have changes to the agenda?
Uh, just one addition, and that would be adding an action item for, um, Lori Morchastol as, um, ready to take the health data position.
Okay, so you wanna make that nine point seven?
That'd be great, because it is a move, um, within the collective bargaining agreement she's going over from a level four to a level five compensation.
And is that, that, um, do we need to put a P or just say that Lori's going from a level four to a level five?
It'll be, uh, she's going from a four point seven, so it'll be the same years of experience for a five point seven, but we'll just get that into motion.
Okay, okay, perfect. All right, um, any other changes? That was it?
That should do it.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt? Motion by Sandy, is there a second? Second by Laura. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Public comments, remember our recognition, um, we don't have any public comments tonight, there was nothing submitted prior to the meeting as well. Um, anybody have any remember our recognition? Happening in the school buildings? As, as usual, we thank our staff, our teachers, our custodians, our food service administration, everybody for everything you're doing during this crazy time, our administrators, um, and particularly our students and parents with our understanding and, uh, working with us as we go through this crazy time. Volleyball team's playing, football team's playing, press conference is done, I believe, and hopefully we can get some speech and debate and everything going here pretty soon for these kids, so. Is dance started yet?
Yeah.
Good, 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 if these kids have something for them to do, so, wonderful, anything else? All right, well, let's move on, special education report, here we am, you're on, six point one.
Hi, you guys, um, sorry if my dogs bark, they're waiting, um, my husband will be getting home soon, so I'm like, I keep watching the door because they're gonna go crazy, so I'll try to mute it real quick if they go nuts, but, um, I just want to share with everyone, we currently have three hundred and twelve students, um, within our district receiving special education services, first and twenty-one, and I should actually say, um, that's within our school district, but that can be open enrolled students as well, so, right now, that's how many students we're serving. Um, we do continue to serve students in a variety of models, right now, we have distance learning, and then when that goes back to hybrid, and then we have our in-person model. Um, I just wanted to talk a little bit to update you about staffing, um, as you know, Sally Lundie is currently our distance learning special education teacher for grades K through five. Um, she works with the case managers and the general education distance learning teachers to create lessons based on the needs of the students from their individual education plans. Um, and right now, we have, um, probably about fifteen students, well, we started out with about eighteen students in the elementary, but we are down to about ten students after conferences, um, that wanted their students to go back to learning in the building, so we are down a little bit in the elementary. So, looking at that, um, we have had teachers and special education par- paraprofessionals out due to different reasons, not just COVID reasons, but other reasons. Um, and everyone within the building, buildings has been so willing to help each other out and be flexible, um, since the beginning of the school year. Um, I know, like, at Dilworth Elementary and Glendon Felton Elementary, we've been down about four Special Ed paras every single day since the beginning of the school year. Uh, so it's just been one of those years that we're all trying to help each other out, and people are just really being flexible. Um, we, we have about two para subs that come in, um, for paras right now, and they're doing maternity leaves, and then we are just having a very difficult time finding any substitute teachers for special education teachers at all. So if we have anybody out for any reason, whether it's a doctor's appointment, quarantine, or if they test positive for COVID, or whatever the reason, we're not getting substitute teachers to take those positions, and it's been very difficult to cover that, so, just wanted to share that. Um, all the sites have gotten their student intervention teams up and running, and they've been meeting, and so what those student intervention teams do, um, people can bring concerns to those teams, um, whether it's academic concerns, behavioral concerns, any type of concerns, and it doesn't have to lead to a special education evaluation, but if interventions have been tried and they've been unsuccessful, well, use to an evaluation, so those things are set up. Um, also wanted to share that, um, Carol Rodney, she's our school psychologist, and she just got me this, this information last week. Um, first quarter evaluation for 2020, um, we've had eighteen reevaluations, twenty-three new evaluations, so a total evals of forty-one for 2020, and for both 2019 and 2018, for this same time period, we had thirty-five evals. So, not too bad, it's, um, maybe a little bit more because we're playing catch-up from getting some evals done that weren't finished last spring because of COVID nineteen and the shutdown of in-person. So, um, and then I just wanted to let you know too, each evaluation between testing and writing up the evals takes between twenty to thirty man-hours. Um, the time it takes to complete an evaluation is dependent on how much testing is required, and each evaluation is a little bit different. So, as you can tell when you look at forty-one evals, that's a lot of time commitment between our school psychologists and the special education teachers who do the testing and the observations, and then writing it up, and then meeting with the families, so, it takes a lot of time. Um, updates within special education, there was some new information regarding revals to try to reduce the load of paperwork, and, um, now if we wanna do, if we, when we need to do a revale, if the team include, with the parents, um, decide that enough, if, we have enough information, we don't have to write a complete evaluation, we could put that information into the IEP instead of having to write an eval. So, really, that would save the team about twenty hours of paperwork, and we probably still have the same amount of information, so that is a huge change. And I just had a Google meets with our Special Ed team last Wednesday to share that information out, so I think people are pretty excited about that as well. And again, that would, that would be a team decision, and the parent would have to agree to that as well. Um, then wanted to let you know that, um, I've completed the first round of teacher evaluations, this includes non-tenured and teachers that are on the rotation for an evaluation this school year. Um, I'll be doing my second round of evals between Thanksgiving and winter break, hopefully we'll get those squeezed in, so. Do you guys have any questions for me that I can try to answer regarding special education?
Marianne?
Yes.
Uh, you said three, three hundred and twelve students, um, that's roughly about twenty percent of the student population, is that above normal for number of kids receiving Special Ed?
Actually, I, well, the average for Minnesota, I believe, is about sixteen percent, so we're a little bit higher, but just talking with other Region Four directors, and Region Four includes Detroit Lakes, um, Lake Park, Audubon, Holly, Barnesville, Alexandria, um, and Morehead, we're all about the same for our percent of special education students right now. And I do feel like because of COVID and because of distance learning last spring and some of what we're having right now, I feel like we are seeing a little bit of an increase with evaluations, now whether those students qualify or not will be determined, but I feel like we are gonna see an increase because of it.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, Marianne, we know you just work your tail off and trying to make sure that we have staff for these kids, so, we greatly appreciate all your efforts, so hang in there, okay?
Thank you.
All right, six point two, custodial reports, James and Tammy or Tam, oh, Tammy, I'm sorry, that's me then, sorry, James, sorry.
That's okay.
Well, I'm glad to report that we have hired after tonight, gonna hire that empty spot that's in Glendon.
Okay.
Um, Brooke has put out the next time supervisor position, and I know I've gotten in the last couple days, I haven't been able to get to them, but she is, there's quite a few that I need to go and look over and see if I can do some interviews, so hopefully we'll hire somebody there real soon. Um, the one thing that we did right from the very start is a blue piece tape over a door, which has really saved us. Um, that blue tape is still on there, then we know that nobody's been in there, that has been really, really key, um, and it saved us a lot of time. When I'm short, it don't make a difference, you work for one district, you know, you go over there, or you come over here, one or the other, and just need to cover it and keep it even between the two, that's what I've been trying to do. There has been some people, though, that have really stepped up, and I really do wanna mention some of those names, um, Jesse Reba, um, him and Sarah Lewis has been unbelievable, I called Sarah today, yep. You know, twenty minutes later, she was in, you know, and Kurt Schroder, he's been the same way, um, I'm calling on a dime, and they're, they're here, and you know, really being teamwork and trying to be positive, like Sarah tries to be really hard, and then Darren Larson, that I can rely on him, unbelievable. He'll go to both buildings, he's doing stuff out of the normal, you know, for me, so, um, the one thing that we are really lucky about is what we have in product and the supply we have. Um, we were not using alcohol before this COVID thing started, we were not using sanitizer, nobody was with alcohol in it, well, then it got really, really hard. Products, it's not about really, I hate to say it, it's not about prices, if you can get it, okay? And we've been able to get, um, and you'll notice in Dilworth that there's new hand sanitizers going up, that has alcohol in it. But it also has vitamin E and aloe, because I don't know whose hands are not dry right now, because that makes a big difference, you know? And especially going into the winter, I thought that was an added, but there's also that in soaps that we're gonna switch to, so, right now. Um, other than that, um, you know, it, you guys got any questions for me, or? We just try to stay positive, I try to emphasize that, and teamwork, you know, I mean.
Tammy, you're short, we're, we're short right now.
Yes, we are too short, um, due to sickness or, you know, whatever, um, and that's the Dilworth site, and, um, I pulled Sarah today over there to take one of their spots, so, um, you know, and remarkable people over here said, ah, no, Tammy, we got this, don't worry about it, you know? And they usually come through for me, so, you know, so, but, we just work as a team and try to, you know, it would be a lot easier if we had a nice supervisor, but I don't wanna just settle there, you know, I don't wanna settle there, and we'll just work through it until we find the right fit, you know?
That's the one position that you're looking at here.
Right, right, yeah, and the guy that you guys are, think are gonna vote on, he retired in North Dakota and said that he was bored, so, he can go back to Minnesota and start on a second retirement, and I said, okay.
You're hired.
Yeah, he is very up person, and I'm, I'm hoping that he works really good, works out really well, so, there's a lot of knowledge there, so.
And, and he's gonna be, this is Mike, right?
Yes.
He's gonna be at?
Glendon site.
At Glendon site.
Yes, yes, he's gonna be at the Glendon site.
Go ahead, Ronnie.
Probably not a question for Tammy and Brian, but imagine these people, when you call them in, that's overtime hours, correct, for them?
That is correct.
Does that come out of COVID fund then, are we able to tap into that or not?
Um, that, that varies.
Okay.
Partly because if it's truly extra cleaning, then yes, but if it's because we're just shorting it, then no, and, and that's what we're running into a lot of is, you know, all of a sudden, somebody gets, somebody's positive, we're going in for testing, and then close contact checking has to be done, and and we'll definitely talk about that in my report a little bit. Um, Tammy, is there anything you can, you know, you and I were talking earlier about the fact when we're shorthanded, um, as far as the fact that the middle school and the high school are on distance.
That has been really basically a saving grace for me, for, for the custodial staff, because a lot of those teachers, those, that blue tape is across the door, and we don't have to worry about it. And that has really saved us from being so short, because it's a continuous, um, for the custodial staff, we're not full at all, and we're more than just one person almost the time, you know, and, uh, so, it, that has been a saving grace, to be honest with you, and it really gets hard when they do come back, because I have to be over here from ten-thirty to one to help with the tables in here, and that means I can't go over there at all, so it's really hard, and I have to rely on the phone. Um, so, yeah, I mean, it has been a saving grace, I hate to say it, but, you know, because I know that we all want the kids back, but it has been a saving grace for the custodial staff on getting stuff done and that, yeah, being so short-handed.
Well, thank you so much, Tammy, we, thanks for being flexible, thanks for keeping her very positive out here, and for.
You know, I really try, because that's really key right now.
Yeah.
You know, it is, it's really key, and, you know, that gets hard sometimes, you know, so.
Yeah, we appreciate you.
It doesn't hurt, that's for sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so.
Any further questions for Tammy? Well, thank you, we appreciate you coming in. All right, six point three, maintenance report, James, you're up.
Do you wanna get you on camera that far away?
Yeah, yeah, I like that. Uh, so, my whole team's been out for a week and a half, we all got quarantined, so we all come back, uh, now, which is positive. Um, news for everybody, Fire Marshall comes on the first and the second of December, so we better make sure all our chemicals and everything are very, um, in code, in size, and everything, I suppose, all the doors that are hooked, or will be unhooked, everything will be things that we kinda make work, we'll have to take off some of the door, you know, things like that, so that's just everyone's aware. Um, snow equipment, we just got a snow bucket, so that should help a lot for Dilworth, that front, kinda move it all the back. I guess a lot of working with Comstock at the moment, with, you know, trying to get through the areas that are being worked on constantly, so that's a lot of back and forth communication, trying to keep people patient as they want things done, but also it's coming in a phase, or it's coming here and there, so they're trying to figure out where we're actually spending money and where we're supposed to kinda hold off, and things like that, so, but I'd say it's going well.
Are you sure it's after Halloween?
Uh, now we'll all be back, but, um, so there's only three of us, so it's, we're real lucky to get all three of us at once, so.
Two days before they, um, end up everyone quarantined, I had told him, your one department, you cannot get COVID.
In snow.
And forty-eight hours later, they're all quarantined, but we, we have more detail as far as if all of a sudden we, we have snow coming, and we, we have, you know, there is work that they can do as far as the snow will move, um, on their own, and then sanitizing, things that we have to do with, with the rigs, because they're isolated all by themselves, that can be done. So we got plans in place for it, but it was, uh, it was something that I had, uh, a little bit of anxiety about, and then, you know, all of a sudden you get the call, every, every time Kayla would give me a, a text, can you give me a call, now, you know, because you just know it's coming, but. Uh, so we've been very fortunate that the weather has cooperated, uh, and we have Brian and Ryan and James all back on snow.
Just assuming snowwork will, you guys are getting kind of places for the roof as well?
Yeah, I mean, as much as you can, really, pretty much, when you get a huge snowfall, you move what's on the ground first, and then you move up onto the roof, but at least now we have all the snow gauges, so we can, more in the off time, they can kinda get up there if we do need some areas that are piling up a little bit, but hopefully stay on top of it, but if you get a couple feet at a time, it's just a nightmare in general, there's only three of us, so you can only, it'll take you two days to move it off the ground, let alone go up top and move all that else, so.
Any other questions for James?
Do we have the ability to bring in outside contractors or anything if we need for any of these issues?
Yeah, we do, but, um, so obviously we have OLEC for parking lots, and then Hoggins for parking lots, but as far as um, anything we can do, we try and keep them off, because obviously it's kind of expensive, so then uh, with the skid, that normally can move pretty much everything, so we'll haul it back and forth as needed, if, if there's more here that needs to be moved, but as far as roof, we don't really have anyone in place, but that was, as we talked about, it's like seventy-five dollars an hour for a shoveler, and it was, that just isn't, isn't plausible, really, to have ten people up there.
We're, we're in much better shape than we were.
Yeah.
Two, three years ago, with every gauges, but, you know, when you think of the snow blowers, things that we purchased, um, the fact of having it locked in, all right, you over invest, and you go right to these areas if we have to, you know?
As long as you all get two and a half feet at a time, you can, you can do a lot better.
Let's think a few about inside maintenance or something too, you know, if everybody is out, you know, I'm sure there's certain, whether it's electrical or plumbing, you bring in outside.
Yeah, I mean, we, we obviously have our plumber and electrician, things like that, but anything we can avoid, we, we try to, but in last resort, we still call them up, and they still come pretty much right when you call them, so that's nice.
So last week, when, I think it was a light bulb that burst, and it.
Yeah, I heard about that.
I mean, so does the fire department have to you?
Yeah, they, so, yep, they talked to me, and actually, um, my electrician's coming tomorrow, we can replace that, I don't really know why it did that, it shouldn't do that, but maybe.
But it was like a.
Maybe somebody put, um, because I'm converting all the lights over to direct drives, and maybe somebody changed the light bulb, and they put a direct drive in, an old style, and something like that, I don't know, I haven't looked at it, because this is my first time in the building, a week and a half, so, uh, tomorrow we'll be back square, and everything will be much better.
A little excitement in the classroom.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was right at the end of the day, and you see all the kids out on the lawn, and you're like, that's not, that's not usually what you wanna see when you pull out, if you got your kid, so.
Well, at least the weather's good.
The weather was great, and the teachers were great, Mark did a fantastic job, and. Any other further questions for James? All right, well, welcome back, stay healthy, and thank you guys, perfect thing you do, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, six point four, board committee reports, um, we just got our superintendent search meeting last Thursday night, so um, our pamphlet is live, and, uh, I think Brooke was gonna have, uh, it went on our school's website as well, um, so I was able to see the final, final copy, so that was really great, I just wanted to point out for the public that's gonna watch, um, that we got our survey results, and we went over those, and of the six, uh, top six, um, specialized skills that, um, we as a school board ranked and the staff, three of the six, we were completely in line, exactly the same numbers as the community was, so I just wanted to point out that, so, I just thought that was phenomenal, and I'm so thrilled that, uh, we're tuned and we're listening, and, and that was pretty cool, so. Anything, anybody else have anything to add, or other superintendents here?
I thought, I thought it was a very productive meeting, um, and a lot, you know, everybody had really good ideas, but just really, very closely worked through the process, it was a very positive experience.
No, I left home, I, I went home, and I was pretty, I was thrilled, just, it just seemed that everything called, so. Go ahead, Ronnie.
I think MSBA said too, they were really surprised at the number of respondents we had, and there was fifteen unit team staff reports, so.
Yeah?
Yeah. They were ready, that's what we're being, so.
Two hundred and eighty, so, thank you to Brooke and Tracy for helping us get the word out in our district, so that was wonderful, and, yeah, I'm excited, so. Um, we will be having more surveys and some community listening sessions, we're gonna be doing one for the community, one for staff, we're gonna, we're checking on dates here, and then we'll do another online survey, and we will send out a postcard for that, so we'll be working on that, and that'll be coming out in December, so. Um, and then I was able to listen on Friday to, um, the meeting with the governor that the MSBA hosted with Commissioner Rickert, and then, um, MDH, with the MDH Commissioner, I can't remember his name. Um, but anyway, uh, there was no big announcement, um, he just, it was, MSBA hosted this, uh, basically to ask questions of the governor. Um, the governor continues to say, please be flexible, balance, you know, we gotta continue to balance public health with education. Um, he just wanted to reinforce, please, in school districts, avoid large crowds, um, avoid going out. Um, their priority is in-person learning, if, if possible, um, you know, talked a lot about the human toll on staff, particularly the nursing staff, trying to do the traceings, and, uh, you know, talked a lot about burnout, and now we're nine months into this, and there's a lot of burnout, so. Uh, the only big change in the, uh, what was it, Executive Order twenty-nine-four, or, I don't know, particular number, increasing prep time for the teachers in distance mode by another thirty minutes, that was pretty much the only announcement that came out of that, and now he amended it, because the way he had, um, announced it, basically said, I think we're gonna have district friends to do overnight, well, everybody's like, whoa, 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 not everybody's in distance mode or hybrid, everybody's in a different mode, and you need to give the school districts time to implement these plans. So now it has been amended that, um, by November thirtieth, these changes need to be new. And Brandon and I were talking, um, before the meeting, and right now, the middle school is pretty good on that, because we're in distance mode, and their days are shortened, and when you try to close, it may fall on that.
Yeah, we're, we're done at three thirty.
So, you have that extra time, so, what did you take out of that?
Well, I, I think we're in good shape as a district from the standpoint that, you know, if you go into distance mode, you can't, you can't expect, number, number one, they had clarification, you may have seen it out of the MRAA, um, update, but there was clarification, uh, and part of it, it wasn't sent in the executive order, any five-twenty, is a key model, that one on Friday, and that's what gave the, uh, until November thirtieth. But, um, they have come out with clarification about interpretation, but, yeah, this thirty extra minutes does not have to be on a day-to-day basis. So, that is helpful from the standpoint that you're looking over the fact that if you have a five-day week, you've got two and a half hours more prep time that you have to plan there, over the course of the week. Well, in first place, because of the way that we do Wednesdays, we already set up extra time that way, so we're gonna be in, in pretty good shape with, because of being able to look at it from a weekly standpoint.
And I listened to. Was asked, for, um, there was over eight hundred and fifty people that were on that call, between administrators and school board members, and one big question was, what is the plan for MCAs in the spring? And, um, Governor Walz just said he's waiting for direction from, with FEBO Biden's if we're gonna be doing MCAs or not. Um, my personal opinion is that I think we need to see where these kids are at, I mean, we did do MCAs last spring, and if we avoid it at this spring, I mean, I think that we, we need to know where these kids are, that's just my opinion, but I wasn't taking in there to, they, they weren't, they were asking questions, they weren't taking statements, so. so other than that, I think that was all it. Nothing, nothing really else.
And the MCAs are gonna be a difficult piece just from the standpoint that, again, they're secured materials.
Yeah.
So if you happen to have students that are in distance mode, are you gonna bring them in for secure? Because you're gonna have to keep, anybody who's ever done any of those tests or been involved in the administration of them. I mean, it's like you are going to federal prison if you lose one of those tests. Uh so the idea, there is no way that these are gonna be take homes. Uh they're gonna have to be onsite. They're gonna have to be very secure. It's gonna have to make sure that nobody has recording devices. So there is, there's a lot of anxiety when we start talking about a few million bucks per test, per grade level in creating those tests and going through the process. So um yeah, they've got their work going on.
And just, they've talked a lot about the social emotional ways of our students uh continue to communicate with site leadership and hopefully, you know, looking for some better just extra funding and such. I I feel like everybody, that was our number one priority on the call was social emotional ways of these students. And I think it was apparent by the people that talked that everybody's keenly aware that these kids are struggling, parents are struggling and helpfully help them. So I think that's gonna be an ongoing discussion and I'm glad to see that. And I was thankful for that conversation that they're they're not pushing that too fast. So so we will see what happens there. Any other board committee reports? We didn't have F and P because our audit's gonna be coming up here. We talked about negotiations last time.
They'd be now satisfied with the the proposal, so we'll be going in that.
Yep.
Perfect.
I want to add a comment.
Awesome. All right. I think that's it. All right. Six point five. Brian, you're up.
So a few things and hopefully um again, with this laptop, I'm I'm not sure if it's in a shared mode. I'm gonna go through this one first, just in case. So tomorrow sometime, um we will have this data and it'll look a lot more user-friendly than what is it, what it is on the screen, but uh we've been going, we've been spending a little bit of time as an admin cabinet trying to figure out, looking at what other districts are doing, what people are putting out as far as on the data. Some are putting cumulative data. Some put cumulative data and active data. Uh and again, a a big part of the issue is do you break it down by site levels? And the more granular you get with this, the more likely it's identifying particular students, which is a part of the problem. So the data that we're gonna be presenting to the public, uh we're through the, all of the staff. Basically what this is giving you is active quarantine versus active positive. There's a lot of confusion from people. Um they hear about fifty students, the whole football team or or you know, this large group of kids that are all sudden in quarantine. Well, that doesn't mean any of them, you you may not have more than one student that's actually positive. But it does create a lot of anxiety. So what we want to be able to show people, and again, we have over, I can tell you this for a fact, we have over seven hundred and fifty lines of data. And so it's taken a few hours, to put it bluntly, on trying to get this ready. Uh tonight I'll I'll finish it up with the middle school and the high school. But we spent about a week and a half just trying to talk, trying to figure out what's the data? How do we want it presented to the public? And what we came to consensus on is we don't want to break it down by the two elementary separately. But we do want to show it elementary age. So that's why we have early childhood through grade five. So all of our preschool services through grade five, they're in one. And we're going week by week and then this will be updated every Monday on the website because we get the data in on Thursdays, Fridays, and sometimes Saturdays. So that gives me the weekend to try to get the data updated for it. And so Mondays will always update it. And so we'll show it, we'll capture that data and we'll we'll keep it so that the early childhood through grade five, which we keep in a direct mode, direct learning mode, um off. And then six through twelve, the reason, again, we're not breaking that up is because we've been putting them all in distance at the same time. And so this is since the very beginning of school, as of every Friday since school began, how many people we've had in active quarantine compared to active positive. So that's the way we're breaking it down. And you'll notice if you look at, for instance, the elementary, yes, there is no question. As of last Friday, eleven six, we're up to seventy-nine students in the elementary that are quarantined. But notice our active positives. So I think it's it's very important for that type of information to get out to the public that just because you have a lot more quarantine, doesn't mean that you actually have a lot of positive cases going on. Some things are evidently working. The the people Beth and Kayla are working their buns off on trying to get the information as quick as possible from parents. Find out who needs to be quarantined. Let's make sure that we've got the contact tracing done and to make sure that we isolate, get those kids at home so that we don't get a higher positivity rate. And it's working. If it wasn't working, we wouldn't be seeing it going up to seventy-nine on quarantine with only three active positives. So got the middle school and high school yet to do tonight. Tomorrow, this will all go public and we'll keep maintaining it the rest of the time that we're in this this mode. Um we we went back and forth. We've looked at multiple school districts that are putting out data. Some put the uh the two-week uh caseload or the two-week case rate by the counties onto the charts. We're gonna keep that off the chart. It's not that we're gonna, we'll we'll put the information up on our COVID site. Part of the problem is with putting the two-week piece up on the same chart, it's not the same weeks. So when I get the two-week uh the two-week active case rate, it's from two weeks prior. So all of a sudden you put up something that's showing a hundred, over a hundred per ten thousand, but it's from two weeks ago, then why are you coordinating with a date two weeks later? And so part of the problem is, I've gone in over the weekend and over a few days and looked at different school districts and they got the same counties, but they've got it from different weeks. So we haven't had that type of guidance and it it's not steep wide. So it's up to every district to figure out, how do you want to show the data? So we're gonna just put the PDFs from the county. You wanna look at that stuff? It's there. But what's really important to us in making the decisions, what kind of activity do we have on a pop? What kind of positive rates do we actually have going on? The highest foreign rate is staff. We're just getting done with a major, you know, we've had Heidi and in particular, the middle school has has really struggled. They just happened to add one of those events, one of those spreader events and involving staff. I mean, it could be as simple as they're having lunch together. And all of a sudden, somebody's positive, boom, you got quarantines. So it's it's, that's probably our high point. Uh you may have seen that the middle school got put under that lovely hit list uh at the state level because if you have five active cases at a site level, that also puts you on the well, guarantee you once we get into the, and and you notice a lot of these, I've already started putting in the quarantine dates showing like eleven thirteen, eleven twenty, but we haven't hit those dates yet. But we know they're gonna be in quarantine through those periods. And that's what also helps us with the planning. Do we continue in distance mode? If we already know how many kids are gonna be, they're gonna be quarantined through this point, or the staff have to be quarantined. So we take all of that local data, which is much more important to us in making those determinations, the two-week old county data. So I wanted to just go through this tonight with you before it gets live and also for the public to be able to know. This is much more than looking at a county positivity rate because that's not even getting into age groups. And, you know, I think this should be assuring to people, notice at the elementary level, we had more active positive cases back in September than we do now. Even though we have more quarantines. So does that help you when you guys get the phone calls from people knowing that this this is going up tomorrow?
Yeah, I think so. Brian, just a few questions. We haven't done the transmission within the school?
We have from the standpoint, not during the school day, other than I I I'm gonna say, we know that we've had it over lunch with staff. Um talking to Kayla today, I I don't believe we we found a positive through uh through tracing from classroom, from student to student. Um we have had it in our FLS, in our extracurricular. Yeah, that's a given. We've had it, we've had it there. Uh but to be honest, we've had it more with adults than we have with students yet.
But when I'm talking about talking about actual transmission of some of the guns.
Positive from another positive one, not in the classrooms. So we've had it over lunch. We've had it in extracurricular, uh positive to positive. We've actually had it up in, you know, our uh, you know, our booths
Right.
with the belts. So um, you know, I I'm not gonna go that far, but I but I would say everything that in my conversations, I mean, we talk multiple times a day between Kayla and I, we still have not seen direct positive to positive between students in the classrooms. Got quarantines, as you can see right now, but not from student to student in classrooms. So that's a good sign. And you and you can see like on the doors, one of the office ones there, you you see what they do to every room. They they put that tape on and 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 so it's very easy for us uh you know, as whether it be a staff member, any staff member to be able to see, yeah, the custodians are doing their damnedest to try to make sure they're keeping up on us. It's tough when they're so shorthanded, but you know, I I applaud them for I think Tammy's done a a a great job at keeping her sanity because that's not easy. At this time, we start getting shorthanded.
Another question, would you be thoughtful treating the middle schools in one for the elementary? And I wonder if I think it's penetrating their elementary and middle schools more similar to you?
Um, yeah, what what you have to do on that, Brandon and I talked about this back when it first came available. So what you can do, a middle school can be treated as either you can make the decision to take a five-eight and if you want to treat them as just same parameters as your nine-twelve high school, or you can put them under the elementary component. Now, you know, there's some, like anything else, there's some uh uh you're opening up, you know, for some potential issues with that. If you're gonna treat them as an elementary, then um, you know, you you're talking now with what you're gonna do with the hybrid for it. Um for us, when we're looking at the busing and some of those things, didn't seem seem like that was gonna create an advantage, especially knowing that everybody in the in the middle school has devices and they've got their curriculum set up so well for them. So, you know, talking to Heidi and and she went through with, talking with her leadership team, they didn't see any advantage for moving that way. And I know more than went back and forth about
Yeah, no, I was just curious as to what some of the thought was.
Yeah, actually, that that was an interesting one when they, because that was like a twenty-four-hour football. Um I I remember what, I remember the conversation with Brandon well, because I think he was in his vehicle going down the twin sins when it was being discussed. And they just had the press conference that day and it it changed how they're looking next year. Other questions as far as on the data or is there, I, do you have any feelings about in particular? You understand why we're not breaking it down by the particular sites?
Absolutely.
I didn't, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about not wanting to get into this. Oh, it's a, it's a one site. It's like, yeah, we're done with that stuff.
Well, I just think a bunch of other things too. I mean, we don't want you to break it down so far that people can figure out what's going on.
Right, because it is a high
Because the same thing with the taxes.
Yeah.
And much bigger districts than us. I mean, more than just for students. You know, so most school districts do not break it down by their full this site compared to that site because it does start creating issues within that district about, oh yeah, it's that data element compared to that element. And who needs that? It's, the kids should be treated the same way. So
Ronnie had a question for you.
One of the questions is out of common regarding the contact tracing and Kayla. I would, let's see, how do I say this so I don't give any personal information? But I was near somebody this morning that I got, they got a call from the mother of the kid. Somebody that was at their house on Halloween now ended up testing positive and they didn't know should they call the school or what? But both that person that tested positive and one of the students that was household were in foster care and the higher ups already had it through foster care, passed it down to our people so that we all, school already knew it before they could even call the school. So so it does get spread around.
It 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 does. And, you know, those events, it could, it's gonna be um, you know, I I do think what the governor is, I personally, what the governor is trying to set up, at least being proactive, the idea that, especially knowing that by November thirtieth, we have to have these plans in place and and what else not. Let's face it, I think there's a lot of people that are concerned about what's gonna take place between Thanksgiving even the deer hunting and people getting together, but November, December, and you look at how the positive, how the rates are increasing and the positivity rate has been increasing uh quite a bit in the Midwest. So
Getting older and all inside together.
Yeah. It's, it's uh, it's gonna be interesting between, to see what happens between Thanksgiving and Christmas whether we end up seeing a state mandate that everybody else go distance during that time. That is possible. That wouldn't shock me. State law. Not advocating at all, but I'm just saying. At least we're preparing that possibility.
So I hope they don't do that because there's some of the other individuals who just, because there are certain areas of the state that are somewhat protective. Then then other parts. And so those kids that may actually be in school, we definitely just not in school. Whether it's the sister or somebody else's sister.
And and the other thing is that's that's so difficult for every school district. You know, you heard Tammy talk about not being able to potentially have enough custodians. I mean, it's all sudden, he lost a whole park. And we look at the fact of having to provide the daycare services for tier one families. Well, if we gotta go to distance because all of a sudden we don't have scaffolding, how are we gonna provide the daycare? Because we're gonna bring those kids right to the end of the buildings. So there is, there is, it really, I think most, I I I believe most superintendents, most school districts would advocate that let us make the decisions based on what we've got for information and what our data is. Because you're gonna know a lot more about what you can provide, can't provide. So um, any other questions on the COVID? Otherwise, um Tracy and Jake are gonna make it pretty tomorrow and take my data and make it a little bit nicer with colors and all those fun things on on the website, but uh we'll keep maintaining the data and then we'll make sure that every Monday from this point forward, all of it will go public. Um just a few, couple other things. Um I know you saw Cindy on on the screen earlier. Um and I'm gonna Um, and I'm gonna get rid of my stuff so that we can actually see everybody else was on there, but, um, we've been very fortunate that we have, both Cindy and Jeannie have agreed to come back. Um, actually Cindy said she wanted to come back for a couple more years. I'm sure she's not going to buy that one. Let me get rid of this. Let me see if I can bring it up. Yeah, Cindy, you're probably not looking at going through May, are you, or June?
Of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah. Good to see you though.
Yeah, good to see you Cindy.
So we're, we're trying to work through those plans in the district office. Uh, it's been, it's been an interesting couple of weeks because we've also had some quarantine going on. Um, within our admin, within our district office, but, uh, that's coming together. Uh, I know that, um, Lindsay, you put out the information on phase one and phase two training. Uh, so, uh, in particular, Nicole and Brittany, uh, you know, you guys get that coordinated, just work it with Brooke. And, and we'll make sure that we get you guys all registered for that. Um. We need to get the last of the negotiations. We have the admin committee. Sometime over the course of the next week. Uh, just know I'm gonna send you, shoot you an email. I'll try to not, try not to do it the night before or anything like that, so we can get it on the books as early as possible. Maybe we can talk about it after the meeting tonight. Um, you know, Lindsay brought up about the executive orders ninety-four, ninety-five, they're, um, they're all on the web. Uh, by the way, the, uh, all the information that we're maintaining and that I showed on the screen with COVID, you all have access to that. That's just in another one of the tabs at the bottom of, of the one that we're working on. Um, the other thing to piggyback off of what Mary Ann brought up. I think it is brought up last weekend around in cabinet meeting, I think we're, I think we have to take a serious look at maybe coming up with, uh, another rate for our, you know, it's something I'll, I'll sit down with, uh, you know, the board sets the rates for stuff. And we do have a lot of people that will not sub, you know, special ed rooms. It's just a fact. Um, you know, it's a, it's a lot more, it's a lot of activity. Uh, you know, it, it isn't any different than how daycares can only have so many kids under certain ages. So I think we have to take a serious look and I think we'll have a discussion with the K five or the Berka five and six twelve leadership teams about, uh, looking to see their reaction to the idea of what if we say on a certified basis, um, if it's special ed, uh, subbing, we may add five, ten bucks, whatever per day onto that rate. Because we can't find them and then we're losing. Problem is, we're setting ourselves up for problems because we're not providing services. And I know Mary Ann would be, uh, as she's hearing that, you know, we have many discussions about that. So, Mary Ann and I, I am very much advocating for the special ed getting their fair share.
Thank you. Thank you Brian. And, and it really is a big problem. It really is a big problem in our special ed rooms. We, we have backup plans to backup plans and our backup is even gone. So there's just no covering and it is, it's been extremely difficult over the last two weeks.
Brian, the funding, but that part of the federal for subbing?
Uh. No, um. You have to have, unless you're gonna have a special ed, or you actually get a special ed service in front of the person. Uh, Mary Ann, I don't know if you heard David's question, but it was regarding the subbing, uh, in a special ed room. And would the federal funding source carry over with a non-special ed instructor subbing for a special ed instructor?
No.
For that added expense?
No, it doesn't cover, federal monies, doesn't cover a non-certified special ed teacher.
Unlicensed. So, and that's one of those that we've, we've talked about before, it'd be nice because it's assuming that you're not getting the same quote, all like, person doing it. So, um, that's a good question. Anyway, that's. But.
All right.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, and maybe we got over it and I just can't remember. So with the teachers that have a positive test, is, are the nurses doing contact tracing just like we do with the students?
And then your last.
Are the nurses doing the contact tracing for the teachers just like they do for the students?
Every person.
Okay, so if the teacher comes up positive, do you be notified by either Beth or Kayla? It was our child.
Actually.
How would that work?
So all of a sudden we have a teacher reporting that they're going in for testing, they're not doing it. So they go through that process. It's typically, typically, especially if it's a teacher, then we've got Kayla involved. Uh, so he'll be with the principals and, and Kayla. We actually, that was, um, you know, we had a couple of those events at the middle school, in particular over the last two, three weeks. And so what ends up happening is they interviewed the teacher, who do you feel you had close contact fifteen minutes for over the course, and of course now they've switched that to over the course of twenty-four hours. Not the same day, which kind of blew up things quite a bit. Because whether it's a student or a staff member, if you think about a student and they go in the halls. They have seven periods a day and they got three to five minutes between periods and now they're by their lockers. But how many different students do you have the potential of having fifteen minutes with, for contact tracing? So, but they do exactly that. So Kayla will, and I, I know for a fact because of how both Heidi and Kayla were getting statements from one that had tested positive and all of a sudden they gotta get the list of all the people that they think are potential. And then they gotta contact every one of those staff members. And then that's what sets up all of our quarantines. So, yeah, there's quite a bit of that. Any other questions on that? They stay busy and, and usually a lot of times, this is Saturday and Sunday work.
Well, is your Debbie Downer superintendent part over?
This is good, this is never getting out of the public. I mean, I can talk about residential rates.
Yeah.
I don't think that would go.
Just, I'm gonna, if you're a few, kind of like Bailey, it's seven oh one, what time are they gonna hop on? How are we gonna know?
We would know because all of a sudden on that screen, it would show that somebody wants them to be made.
Okay, perfect.
So he thought it was gonna be six forty-five, but it's, it could be seven.
Okay, okay. All right, well, let's move along here and we'll try to get down to that by the time, um, I Bailey come up on like over the fiscal year twenty.
And if we get done with everything else before they're ready.
Yeah.
Always come back to my report.
Oh, yeah, Bailey.
Yeah, we'll talk some more about it. All right, seven point one, approval of the regular meeting, um, minutes on October twenty-sixth, uh, twenty twenty, we have a motion. Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Eight, uh, point oh, consent agenda, uh, claims and accounts, Sandy.
I kind of forgot the rest.
I know it's a lot, it's like nine hundred and some thousand. Someone else have her? Uh, is Cindy, can you tell us what the claims and accounts are?
Ronnie's got it.
Oh, Ronnie's got it.
Yeah, we all got it on the sheet.
Okay.
Nine, nine, nine hundred and two thousand, three twenty-four, twenty-four?
Nine hundred and two thousand, say it again.
Here's the only one, yeah.
Nine hundred and two thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Twenty-four cents?
Yep.
Okay. All right. And those, um, just to clarify, there was a lot of construction bills on just this month, so. Uh, we also are gonna approve the donation from Lennon's Light Foundation in the amount of two hundred dollars from the middle school student council. Another donation from Lennon's Light Foundation in the amount of two hundred dollars to the Lynn and Philin Elementary third grade. Uh, so thank you to the Lennon Lights Foundation for thinking of our school and a resignation of Chair Christian, human resource payroll effective November twelfth of this month. Uh, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Laura, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sandy, any discussion?
Question. Do you wanna just clarify then too, I keep missing a, what fund twenty-one is Brian? And, uh, fund six, I presume is the bill.
Cindy, do you want, go for it.
What's fund twenty-one Cindy?
Fund twenty, fund twenty, yeah, fund twenty-one is student activity. And we, it's still in the general fund right now, but we have it, we kept it separate so that we know what student activities are. And fund six is the construction fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, six zero. Uh, nine point one, resolution of candidacy returns of votes of the school district general election, Lord and Amy. Being resolved by the school board of independent school district number twenty-one sixty-four as well. It is hereby found, determined and declared that the general election of the voters of district, of the district was held on Tuesday, November third, twenty twenty. Was in all respects due in legally called and well. As specified in the abstract, a return of votes cast, a total of nine thousand two hundred eighty-one votes of the district were cast at that election on the election of four school board members for a four-year term vacancies on the board held by expiration of term on January first, next following the general election as follows. Candidate Brittany Keel, two thousand forty-three, candidate Lindsey Beach, fourteen eighty, candidate Elizabeth Martin, nineteen sixty-six, candidate Jenna Welm, eight thirty-four, candidate Carol Nelson, eighty thirty-nine, candidate Amy Johnson, thirteen ninety-eight, candidate Nicole Reno, sixteen eighty-four, Brighton, thirty-seven. Candidates Brittany Keel, Nicole Reno, Lindsey Beach, and Amy Johnson, having received the highest number of votes, are elected to a four-year term meeting in January first, twenty twenty-one. The school district clerk is hereby authorized to certify the results of the election to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in Hope, Oregon. All right, do you have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Motion by Ronnie, is there a second? Second by David, this is the resolution, so we'll do a roll call. Uh, Ronnie?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Myself?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Nine point two, resolution authorizing in, issue, issuance of certificates of election and directing school district for other election related duties. All right, Amy? Whereas the board has canvassed the election for school board members held November third, twenty twenty. Now therefore, be resolved by the school board of independent school district number twenty-one sixty-four as follows. The chair and the clerk are hereby authorized to execute certificates of election on behalf of the school board of independent school district number twenty-one sixty-four to the following candidates. Brittany Keel, Nicole Reno, Lindsey Beach, and Amy Johnson. Who have received a sufficiently large number of votes to be elected to fill the vacancies on the board held by the expiration of term on January first, next following the election based on the results of the campaign. The certificate of election shall be substantially, shall be substantially form attached to. After the time for contested, the election has passed and the candidate has filed all campaign financial reports required by Minnesota statutes, chapter twenty-one, twenty-one one eight, the clerk of the school board is hereby directed to deliver this certificate to the persons entitled thereto personally or by certified handle. The clerk is hereby directed to enclose with the certificate a form of acceptance of office and vote of office and substantially in the form attached to. Do you have a motion to approve?
Aye.
Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Uh, so resolution, roll call. Uh, Ronnie?
Can I ask one question?
Oh, yeah, you go ahead.
Uh, so do you scan, uh, campaign things that have been filed already then, or you don't issue it until they are filed?
Um, we just filled them out tonight for Brooke. We didn't have anything more than seven hundred fifty dollars, so we had less than that.
So she'll be, Brooke is already aware of that and then she'll be able to.
Answer that out for you.
Yeah.
Yep.
I vote aye.
All right, Sandy? Myself, aye. Amy?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Motion carries, six zero. Nine point three, uh, fiscal year twenty-one confidential group, group contract, do you have a motion to approve? So, motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David, any discussion or questions?
Did we get these or?
Correct, say that again.
Did we get these or online or anything?
The, I think it was in our packet, wasn't it? Hmm.
So this is, the, the group is, I thought it was in the packet.
Shit, yeah, I thought it was online. I swear we got it online.
Well, it's, it's, you get, well, they, people have a tax, you all have access to, but it's one of those that if it isn't resent each time, it doesn't come right back up for you. So, bottom line is, this is all of the ones, district office positions, so this would include Jeannie now. And the rate for her would be thirty-four. And then, uh, the rest are getting, I think, um, almost all of us are at a four percent increase. We try to keep it very similar to what it was with all the other non-certified and, uh, but it would include Tammy, it would include James, it would include, uh, Mark, uh, any of the, uh, let's see, I can't remember all the names on it.
Do you have one there David, that we can just pass through so we can just look at it? Sorry Ronnie, I, I thought I saw it in there, but.
It was online, that's why I, it's, it's always true, whatever it's for.
Yeah, it's, it's all the ones that don't qualify to be on the non-certified union one. So it's the, it's the remainder of, of all the non-certified people that are not part of you.
And your group voted for it, so whatever.
If you got, you, you even just read off the names of the people on the.
Yeah, um, Belka. I'm gonna mess up names, the Prunes, Butcher, Blaisman, Cannon, Jorgensen, Mark Jorgensen, and then, is it? Brian Jorgensen.
And Brian Jorgensen.
Kennedy Nicholson, uh, Munter, Nettleton, Newton, and Renner.
So transportation people, district office personnel, and, uh, your OT, PT, those special ed positions, all of those rates. And then we put, put them up the same way we did the non-certified, as far as on the rating pieces. And added five hundred dollars towards, they all contribute.
And there's two exceptions to that, right Brian?
As far as the rating face of court, correct, corrected. And one is an adjustment on Brooke's position. And the other one is on Brent Nicholson's. And Brent Nicholson is one of our, uh, tech people. And he also went from a tier one to a tier two. So the committee looked at that, the recommendations from Jake. And in particular, uh, trying to get it more in line with the FM era, which is.
So his percentage increases, nine, nine percent? And then Brooke Belka moves?
Six.
We've got several different roles, trying to get that a little more in line.
Bar for more of it.
Yeah. Six percent increase.
Did you have a motion, Lindsay, yet?
Yeah, yeah, we had a motion by Amy and a second by David and the group was comfortable with all the recommendations moving forward.
Yes.
Okay, I apologize Ronnie, well, I should have made sure that was.
No, that's, that's not mine because I thought it would, I thought it was in the packet.
Okay, well, thank you David for reading all those and answering all the questions. So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Nine point four, this is our audit, um, and I can't see his name, so.
Derek something, I think it's.
Derek.
Hi Derek, welcome to our.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you, hello, welcome.
All right.
Super excited to hear.
I like the enthusiasm. I am going to.
I am going to share my screen here, so just let me work on that. All right, are you seeing the slideshow?
Yeah, we are, so if anybody take out their, your radiated version, the little, the little one, not the big one?
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna go through. I'm gonna go through the executive summary, so first I'll introduce myself, my name is Derek Flanagan, with I Bailey, and on the twenty-twenty audit. If you have any questions, feel free to let me know, I am happy to, to answer, address any questions that you do have. And I'm here to present on the twenty-twenty audit, and the first thing I'd like to do is, is to tell you that the financial statements are yours, and we provide an audit opinion on those financial statements. Keep a clean audit opinion in the current year, that's unmodified opinion, meaning the financial statements are prepared in accordance with principles we're not accepting from the U.S. and do not include material misstatements. There was a new accounting standard in the current year, and there were some restatements from prior year, the new accounting standard being one of those restatements, and so that was to bring on the student activity accounts from fiduciary fund to the general. There was also some cash held with fiscal agent that was identified in the current year for the debt service fund, that there was a restatement for. Uh, the accrued liabilities within the general fund had to be restated, and the community service had some revenues, um, that had to be restated, so those were some restatements that were in the financial statement in the current year, which restated the prior fund balance. As part of your audit, you did also have an audit for federal funds, a single audit is called, in a lot of cases, and you did receive an unmodified opinion on compliance for your major federal awards program report, that's the opinion you want, and that's the opinion you received. Anytime you spend over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, you do trigger the need for the separate audit of federal funds. As we perform our audit, anytime we have findings, we are required to include those in the financial statements and report those. So first with the financial statements, we had four findings, uh, segregation duties, preparation of financial statement, material journal entries, and of employee personnel forms. The first three are very, very common within the school districts that we audit, and really what it boils down to is the fact that school districts, in a lot of cases, don't have enough personnel within their accounting department to properly segregate their functions, um, and, and really duties within accounting to where receipt custody and recording of a transaction are all separated. Uh, if, we have, a lot of our school districts ask us to prepare the financial statements, and when that, that occurs, we report a finding, and then anytime we propose journal entries as part of our audit, we report that as a finding. Those three are very, very common. There were no federal award findings that we have to note, and there were two Minnesota legal compliance, uh, findings, these used to be reported as, uh, within a category we would call student activities, uh, but now with the student activities going to the general, all of that testing is reported under Minnesota legal compliance, and the two findings there are just missing an approval for, just for disbursements, and inactive student activity accounts, and inactive student activity account just means the balance was the same at the beginning of the year as it was at the end of the year, within that student activity. Moving along to some of the financial information within the school district. This is a pretty simple graph here with cash and investment balances for ten years, but nonetheless, nice to see the trend analysis. One thing I will point out is, we do not include the capital project fund cash within this, uh, just because capital projects you receive typically, uh, as a project is started, you receive a large influx of cash, and then it is just spent down as the project is, you know, ongoing, and to compare apples to apples, we just subtract that out for this graph. If you, if you've been on the board long enough, you remember that in two thousand twelve, that is when the state was, uh, much more aggressive, their state aid funding percentage formula withheld, uh, forty percent, uh, thirteen, that went to fourteen percent, and fourteen to now, it's been ten percent, so you're not waiting on as much, uh, of your state aid receivable at your end, now you ultimately always get it, but, um, back in two thousand twelve, that was really putting all difference within the state of Minnesota in a tough, low position. I will point out too, that this cash and investment graph is different from your fund balance, those balances are different, and we'll analyze your fund balance on some subsequent slides. Your student count or ADM served, ten-year history there, so you can see the trend analysis, uh, two twenty did go down from two thousand nineteen, not a big decrease, but a decrease nonetheless. And this is important because your revenues are generated, you know, so much based on your student count, so it's always good to have a handle on where, where your, historically your student counts were and where you projected they'd be going for. Within the general, your budget to actual, so a lot of information on this slide, I focus on the far right two columns, you can see your revenues, you had a negative two point one percent variance, with revenues, when I say a negative variance, I mean that you did not receive as much as you had anticipated with your final budget. With expenditures, you had a point one percent positive variance, positive on the expenditure side, meaning that you did not spend as much as you had anticipated with your final budget. You can see the actual there, you did have a net change in fund balance in the general fund of a negative twenty-six thousand two hundred and forty-seven, and so your fund balance at the end of the year was two million seven hundred and sixty-four of nine hundred and thirteen, and we will analyze that fund balance on some subsequent slides. So a lot of information, but it really shows you where you ended up compared to what you had anticipated with your final budget. So when we analyze your fund balance, having a positive fund balance can, you know, here's three things that, that help having a positive fund balance, it helps your bond rating, produces income in the sense that it invested, and then just offers that questions for unexpected results or shortfalls in revenue. The various fund balance categories are listed here, and you can see the definitions, uh, are, are listed, you can come back to this if you want, but I'll kind of go through it here on this next slide as I go through what you guys have for, um, fund balances, so the top, non-spendable relates to items that were pre-made. The next restrictions, one, two, three, four, or five, the next five restrictions are all restrictions placed on funding received by the state of Minnesota, and the various categories that they pertain to. Uh, it's just related to student activities, and that is just all the funding that you receive for student activities has to be restricted for those purposes, and this is a change in the current year, as I mentioned earlier, whereby your student activities are brought into the general fund from a fiduciary fund. And then the catch-all at the bottom there is your unassigned fund balance, um, and that is, is kind of after you determine all those other amounts, then you can determine what your unassigned is. So as we do some analysis on this fund balance, this next slide is just the ten-year history showing you the balances by those categories, and you can see the, the makeup of each of those categories, if you're more of a, it's got the line chart format at the top, if you're more of a numbers person, it has the actual dollar amounts there, uh, at the bottom. The next slides here are gonna do some analysis on your unrestricted fund balance, and what we're gonna do here is we're gonna take your unrestricted fund balance, or unassigned fund balance, and we're gonna determine the percentage, uh, of that unrestricted, of expenditures, so we take your unrestricted, divided by expenditures, to come up with a percentage. You guys have a policy that you have where you strive to maintain a balance no less than ten percent and no more than fifteen percent of your annual budget. And you can see the dollar amounts that those equate to, approximately one point eight million, uh, in unassigned fund balance, or two point seven million for the, the top end. And your ten-year history for that percentage, um, within your general fund is tier listed, you can see six point nine percent, uh, in the current year, uh, so below that, that ten percent that you're striving for as a, as a bottom, um, and a decrease from the prior year. Now, some of, some of that decrease related to restatements, um, you noted, uh, that the, the difference in your unassigned fund balance year over year was pretty small in terms of how much the actual dollar amount went down, um, but as your expenditures grow, uh, this percentage grew down as well. So good, good analysis here on your fund balance, to really analyze where that fund balance is compared to what you guys have published, or what your fund balance policy is. Everything to this point has been really focused on the general fund, so I'd like to include some slides on some other funds. This first one, the community service fund, you could see the balance there, uh, the ten-year, uh, balance in terms of, of where you're at, and, and just see the increase, that you did have an increase from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, uh, in fund balance. Fund balance in two thousand twenty finished at approximately sixty-seven thousand dollars. Food service fund? Again, same format, within the food service fund, there is a limit that you can have in that fund, so we have that at the top there in, in the maroon line. Uh, there was a, there was a transfer from the general fund, uh, to cover the operating deficit within this, uh, fund, um, and your fund balance at the end of the year stayed consistent with the prior year, uh, of a hundred and twenty-two thousand. And your debt service fund, debt service fund is a fund where you count for the property tax levies and federal sources, uh, that are, uh, that you are receiving that are to be paid for your debt service that comes due, um, and you can see where that is over the ten-year history there. Fund balance at the end of the year, uh, one, one point six million, the large increase there relates to the, the cash that is being held with fiscal agent for two of your bonds, and when those come due, you'll have the cash with that fiscal agent pay those. And that was one of the restatements we mentioned earlier. And that is actually the last slide, were there any questions?
Any questions, anybody? Thank you for joining us, Derek, uh, no one has any questions on this, and we appreciate you coming in and going over this with us.
Yeah, I, I wanna, uh, just take a minute or two to thank you guys, and thank everyone involved with the audit, with, I know you guys are dealing with a lot, and, and probably won't be to, to wrap this up, but, uh, um, you know, it was a unique year with COVID to do the audit as well, it, it maybe took a little longer, uh, because of that, but, um, I'm here to present November as the test, all the hard work everyone put in, there was a transition, and, you know, towards the end of the audit there with, uh, you know, the business management services, uh, but really appreciate everyone's hard work in getting this wrapped up and done, and here to present to you here today.
Oh, Ronnie?
I do have one question, have you done other school district, districts lately, and what's your unassigned fund balance has been doing, or is there any general trend?
Yeah, so, we do a lot of, of, uh, school district audits, um, and, and what I would say is, um, I don't know if there's an exact trend, um, but everyone is, is, is dealing with this COVID issue differently, uh, and for the year that I'm presenting on, two thousand twenty, it was completely unexpected. Now, you guys are dealing with it for two thousand twenty-one as you, as you sit there now and go through your board meeting for tonight, you're more forward-looking, um, and, but for two thousand twenty, no one could expect it, so budgets didn't have them incorporated, um, knowing what impact that was gonna have to community service fund or a food service fund, or even the general fund, uh, was extremely difficult. Uh, some trends that I see, um, there's maybe some small cost savings that, uh, some schools, not all, but some schools, uh, achieved because their school was, was closed, whether it be, uh, maybe saving a little bit with electricity or, or things of that nature, um, but, uh, the, the, the other side of that is a lot of times in community service funds, uh, programs were stopped legally, and, and the expenditures still need to be made for those programs, but the revenues didn't necessarily come in, um, as COVID canceled certain programs and things of that nature, um, so there's really a lot, uh, you know, to consider there, and it affects all funds, um, but, you know, to say that there's one trend with, with the unassigned fund balance in general funds, uh, I would say that, you know, I, I don't know that I feel comfortable saying that there's one trend, um, each school district kind of faces their own challenges and, and, uh, unique situations, um, just that everyone was dealing with the unknown.
Well, I think, you know, we all know that anyway, but Brian, being within one tenth to one percent on expenditures is extremely accurate, especially with the unknown type thing, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm still getting used to unrestricted, in the old days it was unreserved, and, you know, just different terminology, but it's same thing, so. But yeah, what, one, ten to one percent positive on the expenditure, so. But that, it's always, always been there in the last few years, so. But just, so people know too, you know, that, that's about the only thing, that's unassigned, it's about the only thing we have to work with, so the other country really can't do much well, so.
I appreciate you pointing that out, and, you know, we have to be cognizant of that number keeps trending downwards, and we gotta do whatever we can to try to start getting that to go up the other direction, we've been kind of on downward scope, so really gotta concentrate on that, and do what we can. All right, Derek, thank you, I don't think there's any other questions here, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ronnie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David, any further discussion or questions? Hearing no, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Nine point five, this is an extra agreement between, uh, Independent School District number twenty-one sixty-four and M S E eight, thank you, Derek, bye.
Thank you, have a great night.
You too, thank you. Um, do we have a motion, from, motion by Sandy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David, any further discussion? Any questions?
Was this one on line two, or is this just standard language, right?
Uh, we went over this one at the last, or maybe we gave the board report on it, we just didn't have it approved yet because there were some things that just had to be ratified and on.
Well, and the, the union needed to approve it too, so. Um, they've done that, this is essentially, if you recall, some, uh, four and a half percent, is that right, Brian? Trying to remember.
It was a three percent increase, uh, each year, and then five hundred dollar increase, um, health insurance each year. So, and, and then steps, almost, so when you, when you add the steps on, and the fact that some have longevity and what else, it becomes a four point something. that some have longevity and what else, it becomes a four point some percent overall increase each year.
Is this the new name for their thing, or what am I missing?
Uh...
It's always been M S E eight?
Well, sixer, sixer.
That's new for me.
Yeah, Minnesota School, um, Employees Association, they, it was, I think it was probably my second or third year here that they went away from the Teamsters.
There's the paraprofessional line.
So...
Custodians.
Food service.
Non-certified type people.
Era, a non-certified.
Just so you know, Ryan, but part of this, the, you know, part of this, um, cost is essentially reimbursed through the federal government for some of the errors, isn't that right, Brian?
We, yeah, when you look at the percent of our paraprofessionals, uh, are funded through special ed, they're directly, we, we don't have many regular classroom paraprofessionals, so we do get some, some support from the government with that because of the special ed bill associated with it, but it's shrinking every year, isn't it, sending that, that percentage, so, you know, because we get it based on salary only, a certain percentage of them. It's very interesting to watch, thank you.
All right, we have a motion by Sandy and a second by David, any further discussion or questions? Hearing no discussion or questions, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries six zero. Nine point six, this is a non-certified contract for Mike Miller, custodian that Tammy mentioned, sixteen twenty-one an hour, he'll be starting on, starting tomorrow, November ten, that's our motion. Motion by Laura, is there a second? Second by Amy, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Nine point seven, this is a non-certified contract for Lori Moore Castle, she's gonna be moving from a paraprofessional to a health aide.
Yep, it'll be admin assistant, so, because again, it's an office position, so it'll be district admin assistant, health aide position, so, um, it was updated that, and there's no question, they are an aide of help.
So, for Amy, Jordan Jones, do you need clarification?
This is an existing position that we have.
Yeah.
What's her name again?
Lori Moore Castle.
So, she's simply moving from one job classification over to another, and then we'll fill out her position.
You said she's part admin, district admin, and a health aide?
Sit, I'm sorry, sit at the end there?
She's a district admin assistant and a health aide, is that what you said?
Yeah, it's just under the admin assistant, you know, overall, kind of like admin assistant, high school admin assistant, middle school, and so on, except instead of her being set for one set building, it's district one, so that way we don't have one principal saying, this is my extra person helping, just because of where they're located, so if we need that, Beth is gone and she needs to go to that side, or we wanted to make sure we get that clarification.
How do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Laura, any further discussion or questions? Hearing no discussion or question, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries six zero. All right, uh, ten point oh, board comments, future agenda items, our next board meeting is Monday, November twenty-third, six P M. in the, uh, High School Media Center, there is a district oversight meeting, Brian's gonna check, can you follow through with him, Ronnie, to make sure he doesn't cross off on my calendar, but I don't think it's not happening.
It's not crossed off on my calendar, Lindsay.
Oh, you know why, because I said, I said no, I bet that's why. It's on computer, so I marked it out, but it's still showing the minutes there, okay.
He's just hearing me a little bit.
Taxology, you know?
After lots of mine, but...
Okay, so, district oversight, one for me to three, if you can, Wednesday, if you could be there, Amy and I both report a good day.
And there's a couple of big things on, on there for that one. One will be, uh, they're gonna have updated information on the estimates associated with the science area, the high school, and the second one is talking timeline. Are we still on timeline for the fall? Because we've had some delays, so tomorrow I'm actually meeting with Jason from Comstock, and Lee, and Matt, and some of them, so they can give me, okay, let's have a frank discussion about this, does it still make sense that we could be planning for the fall? Because as we went through the summer, you know, when we have that delays on the permitting, we have the same thing going on right now, again, with the phase two, and so right now we only have, we just got one of the state people assigned to the door, is second phase, and we don't have one for the glinda, and then after you get somebody assigned, then you get your lovely listing of all the things that you have to go through for protocols and the findings, and all of that stuff has to be done before you can even start phase, the next phase. So, the idea that we're gonna get footings and all those things this fall, so, am I a downer tonight with all this?
That is a real, that's just a real doubt, I mean, I'm just really bummed, because we have been doing this project for how long, and to be, not be able to dig and do stuff because we can't get permanent, I, I'm just kind of frustrated as a Minnesota taxpayer.
I'm trying to keep some of that...
A little ticked off.
But it's not, it's not...
I'm just gonna say it all out, get it together, say it all. D G F wants to put people to work, here we go, let's do this. Sorry, just my little outburst, I'm so excited about this project, and it's just, like, you know, when you drive in here and you see what's happening, and it's just gonna be so awesome for our students, it's gonna be so awesome for our staff, and to have these delays really chaps my mind.
We just drove by Delaware tonight on the way out, the north side, you know, just all dirt and nothing going on, and I don't know where we're supposed to be.
Yeah, well, you know, maybe that's something we could have, I know December is usually a short meeting, you know, truth and tactician doesn't, but maybe we could have that, Jason and our lead just come and give us an update at the board for all of us speaking. So, that would be just a nice report, just to kind of hear where we're at, so... Anyway, uh, any other things going on, anybody? So, all right, well, meeting is adjourned, it is seven forty, thanks for all.